Good evening. I'm Mayor Mark Northrup, City of Hudsonville. I'd like to call the Hudsonville City Commission to order for August 8th, 2023. Before we start the meeting, let's all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Bullheys?
Here.
Branson?
Here.
DeVray?
Here.
Groot?
Here.
LaRar?
Here.
Nitre?
Here.
Mayor Northrup?
Aye. Before we start for public comments, there'll be a moment of silence. One of the suggestions I had here on the dais was that we need to reflect for a moment on our families and our children going back to school and getting ready. So, let's have a moment of silence and then we'll start the meeting. Thank you. Moving on to public comments, we have one on the agenda, and I believe there might be a couple more after that. We'd like to recognize the Hudsonville State Champions for the girls volleyball. They're volley. Wow. Water polo.
It's water polo.
So, this is your sixth year. The Hudsonville Girls Water Polo Team won their sixth consecutive MWF, MWPA state title. When was it? Was it today? How long ago was it? Huh?
It was in June.
It was in June? Okay. Well, we missed a couple months. And your win of 7-4 over East Grand Rapids. That's a wonderful thing in the championship game. The title was extra sweet because they won it in their own pool, which is a wonderful pool. Another incredible seasons for the Eagles. Congratulations from the City Commission and the city for the players and the coaches. Coach Ian, if you'd step up here, please. Coach Ian, we've got to stop meeting like this. I mean, you've been a real rock star for the City of Hudsonville and what you and the program has brought to the city at large. The pool, the water polo teams, the swim teams were really the powerhouse of West Michigan, and people know that, and people recognize the value brought to the community. And all these young ladies here are going to have a great future. They're going to continue to swim and be collegiate athletes perhaps, and continue to bring great value and pride to their community and their families. So, I have a resolution here. I am not going to read it all because it's a little wordy, but I will give it to you, Ian. But I want you to know how privileged we are to have your leadership and to have your team win the state championship. Thank you. So, who's the captain of the team? Are there one or two of them?
Uh, yes, a few. Kelly.
Why don't you want to step up here and speak a little bit? Come on. Don't be shy. Oh, can we maybe get a photo here? Somebody got a camera? They're going to... Does someone have a camera in this room? There's a few, probably. So, ladies, each one of you, what was the most memorable thing about your season this year or your time on the team?
Um, definitely just our team, like, for...
One big family, yeah?
Um, definitely winning, like, staying at home. Like, that was super cool to be in that pool one last time and, like, one big win at the end.
Yes, and then we had a tournament in Illinois that we all got to stay in the halls together, and that was really fun, too.
Cool. And just so I know, what are your names?
I'm Edward.
I'm Ann.
I'm Kayla.
Very good. Well, congratulations. Well done. Are you graduating all this year? Are you graduate already?
Yes.
And where are you bound for?
Jersey.
I'm going to Taylor University.
Good for you.
And I'm going to Bethel University.
Bethel. Very well. Well, we're very proud of you and continue the good work, and hopefully, are you going to swim collegiately or are you going to water polo?
I am.
You are? Okay. Good for you. So, we're all very proud of you. We're going to start the meeting now. You don't need to stay because you probably don't want to, but... And you're not going to hurt our feelings if you leave and go off and do what you should be doing tonight on a belovely warm summer night. So, thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
some of the audience tonight. Sarah, come on up. Come on up. One of our newer residents to the city. Sarah is our city manager Tyler's fiancee. Sarah Fellows, but we appreciate you coming and living in our city and uprooting yourself and joining our community, and we're looking forward to a long future with you and your future husband. So, thank you for bringing him, and we're only as good as the other half. Remember that, Tyler, okay? Other public comments? Ken? Good to see you tonight. You're not in Florida for a while, I guess.
Well, for those of you who don't know, I'm Ken Jipping, downtown businessman for, believe it or not, over five decades. I mean, 53 years ago, when I started my insurance business in downtown Hudsonville, I found that the lot to the north of me was so filled with debris and brush that you couldn't walk through it. And a few years later, I was able to purchase that property, went to Gimmins and got a chainsaw and almost cut off my leg as I was cutting brush, thinking it was a hatchet or something. But I had the privilege, over the years, to work with five different city managers. Four of them before you died. Can you believe that? Anyone that old? But anyway, and I was privileged to help with, I've been thinking back, there were four major road constructions in the downtown area in the last five decades, and I was privileged to work either directly or behind the scenes with the city manager on these projects. And over the years, I decided to invest the majority of my retirement funds in purchasing property in the downtown area. Well, the city was also able to obtain some of those properties at little or, in some cases, no cost. But I'm here tonight to inform you, after all these years, it's going to tough, but I would say, I look to myself and to my wife, I got to quit dealing in commercial real estate properties in the downtown area. And your five-year development plan has given me an indication that you might be interested in some of those properties. I'm willing to begin negotiations with you to determine a fair and equitable price for these properties. If you do not have available funds, I'm willing to, you know, negotiate terms or whatever you want. I happen to be the sole owner, so don't get me a lot of people involved. And, or my trust actually owns it, but the sole trust speaks. But if you're no longer interested in that, please, as soon as possible, tell me you're not interested, so I can go on and divest myself of that responsibility. I spent five months in Florida, and it's tough. I get calls, "Oh, the toilet is..." You know, I can't, I don't want to do that anymore. After 53 years, it's time I cool it. And I've had a number of parties that have expressed an interest in these properties, but I've always said, "Look, my primary concern is that these properties end up within the plan that Hudsonville wants to have for the downtown area." I've tried to be very faithful to that. And so, actually, I'm here tonight to publicly and personally tell each of you that I have no desire to turn my back on helping you with making your plans come to fruition, but please consider that I owe it to myself and my family that I got to divest myself of that and go on and spend more time. I don't play on the beach, but I like to play golf and that kind of stuff. So, I'll be waiting to, hopefully, in the near future, that you, through Tyler or someone who hit to me and tell me, you know, you want to deal or don't you? Please don't sit on it. Thanks.
Ken, just want to thank you for your years of service to the city. I've been privileged to be up here for 10 years. Been on several boards with you over the years. Obviously, I don't have five decades, but I think Larry, you've served with Ken all these years, and you really have brought much to the community and the city, and we appreciate the loyalty and your frankness with us, which I think is pretty important at this point. But we acknowledge what you're saying, and rest assured that the commissioners and I will be speaking more about this, and you'll hear back from Tyler.
Well, I also owe it to the city. I mean, it's been just a great place to do business for me, and to develop my business over all these years. I wouldn't have wished to be in a better place, you know? Initially, I was going to start in Jensen, but then it flipped that I ended up in Hudsonville, and man, what a great deal.
Thanks. Thank you, Ken.
Thank you, Ken.
Are there any more public comments that aren't on the agenda? Hearing none, we'll go to the consent agenda items. There are, what, six? Five? Six. Minutes to the City Commission Regular Session dated July 11th. Minutes to the City Commission Work Session dated July 25th. Minutes to the Board of Review Meeting dated July 18th. Minutes to the Library Advisory Board Meeting dated July 18th. Minutes to the Planning Commission Regular Session dated July 19th. And minutes to the City Commission Special Session dated August 2nd. Of note, I don't know how many of you read those minutes, but the one that I read this time at length was the board review, and there were two parties that got a exemption from property tax for poverty. So, as much as we think we are a well-to-do city and that people can always pay their bills, there is poverty in the city, and we need to be sensitive to that. They met the requirements laid out by the state law, but we did have two families that couldn't pay their property taxes, and they were granted the exemption. Are there any changes or additions to the consent agenda items? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Do I need...
I need to make a statement.
So moved.
Support.
So... You got that?
You can do a voice vote.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those say no. The consent agenda items carry. Thank you, Phil. And Phil, thank you for covering for me last month. For those of you that don't know, I attended the banquet on the east side, and I happened to sit next to Governor Snyder over dinner, so there were some interesting conversations. If any of you would like to hear that conversation, I'd be more than glad to share it with you. I did speak to him about when he was the mayor and our tax revenue sharing challenges we had when he was the governor. So, as much as I appreciated him balancing the state books, I let it be known that there was an impact to some small municipalities like ours. As we all well know, it was a tough go when we didn't get our revenue sharing. Okay, moving on to new business, public safety, July Public Safety Statistical Reports. Chief, did you get sunburned?
A little bit today. I voted the racetrack this afternoon. Tomorrow night, we have a race, so if you want to come to Berlin tomorrow night, you can...
That's not with the fire truck, is it?
Yeah, it's not. I may have used a little vacation time and spent a little time at Berlin Raceway today, so tomorrow as well, we sponsor a car out there. It's kind of fun. It's a good family environment. A good time. For the month of July, we had 46 calls for service. It was a busy month. That brings our call line to 330, so we are about 28, 30 calls ahead of last year, so we're trending up again on calls. The busiest thing of the month was probably all the PR events that we did. June and July were busy, busy months. We were happening on Harveys each Thursday night in July, and we had a blast. So, if you missed the dump tank...
Yes, I did.
Yep.
I did.
There's always next year. We had a good time. We had a great time, actually. And it was good to be out with the community and doing that. Any questions on the report?
Well, the happening on Harvey with you spraying from the truck was a big win with the kids that night. I was there, and it was just pure joy to watch those little kids playing in the water.
That was a last-minute decision, and I talked to Bryn about that, and I said, "How about if we moved from the east side to the west side where we had hydrant access?" And it was a hot night. And just put the ladder up and spray down on the kids, so...
Kids have at least this commissioner, so...
Oh, you got under one?
Excellent. Thank you.
Yep.
I kind of enjoyed the ice cream the other night. Very well. Any questions for the chief? Thank you. Keep up the good work, and we look forward to August as the fair, right?
Yeah.
And you'll be busy there, won't you?
Yeah, we are getting ready for that already, and, yes, we have about a week and a half, and the fair will be upon us. Our plans are pretty well etched already. We have crews set up, and we'll be there every day from 10:00 in the morning until 10:00 at night.
And you...
That's a medical standby. So, there'll be two personnel on site the whole time. And then in the arena, we'll be there Tuesday night, Wednesday night, Thursday night, and Friday night.
Good.
So, we'll have trucks. We'll have a little help from James down there in the arena as well.
Good. And you picked up a new cadet, I guess, right?
What's that?
You picked up a new cadet?
We did. So, at this point, going through pre-employment stuff.
Okay. Good.
So, if everything goes well, we hope to onboard here in the next couple of weeks.
And how are you for staffing now?
We are low on staff. Our census numbers are a little low, so we need essentially maybe eight more, but we don't want them all at one time.
Okay.
Because it takes time to get them through the training, so two or three a year for the next three years would be helpful. So, we're going to keep pushing on that and advertising, and see what we can do.
And one may replace you in 20 years, huh?
More sooner.
Thanks. Sergeant?
So, you thought that you was taking a fire engine out to race at Berlin, and if you want a new one that bad, you can do it. We had a busy month as well. 27 calls, 150 traffic stops, so they're all 30 stops. One thing I'd like to invite you guys to is Monday, late morning, we do have a cops and coffee event that we just planned a couple weeks ago. We have signatures, so it's going to be publicized this weekend. So, if you guys are around, you can come between 9:30 and 11:30 to signatures, and they're going to be offering some free stuff for people that come to see us. So, just an invite to you guys as well. And again, the fair has been a big-time consumer. The three of us here have been, we had a meeting last night, and we've had multiple meetings with staff. A lot of people there from noon to midnight every day. I'll have about five people every day, so we're really busy. Any questions at all?
Any questions?
Jeff, that event you have at signatures next Monday, is that just your team here or is that like the sheriff or the undersheriff or anybody else?
My team plus a couple Georgetown people.
Great. Thank you.
Your team want to come up?
Jeff, I understand that we did have a little bit of rash of vehicle break-ins. Has it been mitigated now or...
We did put a stop to some of it, yes.
Okay.
I can't obviously get into specifics of that, but there's been some things that have developed that seem to have helped.
So, lock your car when it's in the driveway?
Yeah, a lot of cars are actually the first we're going to do. Yeah, it's still busy. There's plenty of them out there. You guys are trying to keep up on follow-up, so it's busy.
Anything else? Thank you, Sergeant. Dave?
All right, a couple things to highlight. My department, we always had kind of a minimal presence at safety night. We thought we wanted a staff member, and after all, we were there at the beginning of this thing, so I actually asked JJ to take the lead since he has some creative ideas, and so that's what we did our last effort, is kick some ideas around, try to come up with things where maybe we can do like a scavenger hunt for kids, safety scavenger hunt or something like that, and have some little goodies for them. So, we'll see how it all transpires. JJ's working on it, but hopefully, we'll have a little better presence than just a table with some pictures of people, you know, asking, "What do we do? Is that a lifesaver?" But the kids love that part, when you get the traffic line out. Also, I want to note that where it says a county volunteer meeting, there's a copy-paste error there. The whole paragraph is wrong. So, the paragraph is from June when we had the volunteer picnic, which was very nice. In July, we had just a regular meeting, and that is typically just kind of an administrative meeting of all the volunteer organizations in Ottawa County, so search and rescue, cert, our team, amateur radio, all that, giving updates on what's been going on, and that way we can kind of hear from each other and get to make connections with each other. A lot of networking goes on there before and after the meeting, so we, I mean, some of the big happens, we all know who each other is. That's the only thing to highlight. Any other questions or comments?
Commissioner? Well, on behalf of the Coast Guard, Semper Peratus. Thanks, Dave.
I'm glad we can help. We actually enjoy helping with Coast Guard Festival, and we've learned a lot up there that we apply down here. Our fair paddock plan got better over the last several years as I learned from the Coast Guard.
Good. Thank you.
Thanks.
Moving on to finance, city treasurer's monthly report.
Can we turn this over to Ashley?
Ashley?
The biggest thing to note for this month is that it is June, so the budget amendments that were voted on and approved in June are now reflected in the new total budgeted revenue and expenditures on the bottom. And then, just a reminder that June is kind of going to change. It's still pretty open in terms of the year, just due to audit-related process and late coming money that comes in later in the months that will be bumped back into the correct fiscal year. So, those numbers may change slightly going forward, but as of right now, that's the current picture. And then, we had a CD mature in July, and I just wanted to point out the increase in interest rates. This was a 12-month CD that was at 1.24%, and we reinvested it now for 4.98% for another 12 months.
12 months? Good. Any questions on the finances or for the treasurer? Thank you, Ashley. Did a fine job, and I guess next month, we might have somebody else in that seat or not?
It will not be next month.
October.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Very well. Let's move on then to payment of the bills. Is there a motion?
I will make a motion to confirm the payment of the bills in the amount of $642,921.64, and to confirm payment of the bills paid between meetings and reviewed by the finance committee.
Support. It's been moved and supported by the finance committee. Any questions or discussion on the bills? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner DeVray?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Bullheys?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Groot?
Yes.
LaRar?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Aye. Moving on to ACH, funds distribution. Is there a motion?
I will make a motion as well to confirm that the funds distributed by automated clearinghouse in the amount of $2,118,699.91, which were distributed between meetings interviewed by the city manager.
Support. This movement's supported by the finance committee. That's a pretty big amount.
Taxes.
Taxes. Okay. All taxes. So, they were dispersed in our fiduciary responsibilities, okay?
Justified, but still a number to stumble on.
But, yeah, I mean, you can't... So, I always forget that this time of year when we have to make that disbursement. Hearing, no other discussions. Roll call, please.
Commissioner DeVray?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Bullheys?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Groot?
Yes.
LaRar?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Aye. Moving on to administration, outdoor entertainment zoning ordinance amendment. Is there a motion?
Motion to adopt ordinance 23-332, amending the City of Hudsonville zoning ordinance with respect to the outdoor entertainment use standards.
Second motion.
It's been moved and supported. Are there any questions on this ordinance? There is a lengthy memo from Sarah, who's done the yeoman's work on the social districting and has been champion for this whole movement to change the face of the downtown a little bit in terms of our activities. Any questions for Sarah? I think we're all pretty clear on what this has done. If you've been down at Harvey for Thursdays, it's been a great experience. People can walk around with a drink and enjoy themselves a little bit, and it's just a little lot more relaxed. I think families can, you know, dad and mom can have a beer, and the kids can play in the fire truck. That's been a great experience, and it's been a great addition to the downtown. The restaurants have expressed a lot of gratitude for this movement, so it has had an impact on the community. It's been moved and supported. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Groot?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Bullheys?
Yes.
DeVray?
Yes.
LaRar?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes. Motion carries. Moving on to item 14, finance director appointment.
I make a motion to appoint Andrew Smith as City of Hudsonville Finance Director, Treasurer, being subject to the city manager effective September 18, 2023. Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? One comment I have to add here, and I think Tyler, maybe you want to jump in here a little bit about the process and the runner-up candidate, some of the comments you heard back from her, I think would be appropriate to share with the commission.
Sure, Mr. Mayor. First off, I want to credit HR Director Andrea Rappino, staff that participated, the finance department, various department heads.
Department, various department heads, Commissioners Groot, Commissioners DeVray, with regards to their participation during the interview process. We had a great, we had some great candidates. We held five interviews. From those five interviews, we held a second round of interviews of more of an informal nature. The Finance Department, select department heads, as well as members of this body, had an opportunity to do a Q and A with the two individuals. As such, the HR Director, myself, and two Commissioners got together and were able to make what we feel is a great fit to join our team here at City Hall as our next Finance Director. As the mayor alluded to, one of the candidates who went to the end of the process had extremely positive feedback with regards to the process and the professionalism. And for that, I give credit to the culture we've established here within all city operations, but additionally with our individual team members, from the department heads to the Commissioners. My office was involved, and I'm not going to take credit here, and with Andrea's professionalism in the process, it was a great compliment to hear. And the individual stated that, to keep her in mind in the future, regardless of where we go, if it happened to come, that this would be part of a team that she would love to be a part of. So kudos to everyone that was involved, and on a great process. I think we're all happy it's over, and we look forward to having Andrew join our team mid to late September.
Very good. Any other questions from the commission or comments? I'd like to thank the Commissioners, Tobin and Jack. And I know you really stepped up and you were really very involved, and it reflects on the outcome, so thank, thank all of you. It's been moved and supported. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Groot?
Yes.
DeVray?
Yes.
Bullheiss?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
LaRar?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Aye. Moving on to item 15, Early Voting Service Agreement with Ottawa County, is there a motion?
Motion to execute the early voting services agreement between the City of Hudsonville and Ottawa County.
Second.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion from the Commissioners?
I just appreciated when Justin came to that last meeting and explained this.
At length.
It helped quite a bit.
He, he.
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing.
He really did a nice job coming in and speaking to us, I thought.
Yes, he did.
Getting us advised.
I would add to that, Jill has worked a lot behind us as kind of the, or their position in the county, the clerk or any elected president or.
Yes, elected, elected as secretary and promoted to president.
Yeah, I know you put in a lot of work and effort also.
Speaks well for our community and your involvement in the community at large.
Well, and during that meeting, Justin spoke very highly of Jill, her leadership in that committee, so thank you.
We're fortunate to have you. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner LaRar?
Yes.
Groot?
Yes.
Bullheiss?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
DeVray?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to the Department of Public Works, number 16, the Sewer Agreement, is there a motion? Phil, come on, you're the civil engineer, it's got to be you.
Motion to approve the amended and restated sewage disposal agreement as presented, and to authorize the signing of the agreement by the mayor and the city's clerk.
Second motion.
It's been moved and supported. We have the Ottawa County Road Commissioner and Public Utilities Director, Patrick Staskevich, who has a short presentation for us, so you promised we'd only take about an hour. So, thanks, good to see you, Pat, and we're glad to have you here.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you giving me some time tonight to talk about an exciting thing about sewer contract. I know you're at the edge of your seat, but this is an important topic. I represent Ottawa County and the eastern part of Ottawa County, so Georgetown Township, Hudsonville, Jamestown Township. And we've had a long, successful relationship with Granville, and it's now, now's the time to restate and amend the contract. And so I've got a quick presentation to get everybody on the same page, and hopefully they'll be comfortable with proceedings. So first, the plant is located over at, right off the highway and Grand River, at the end of Baldwin Street. And here's a picture of the biodigester, which we get the gas off of that to create electricity in the plant. I'm going to briefly go through these items, because this is a restated agreement, and the reason why we're restating it is because there are three amendments. So we started back in 1964, with the City of Granville constructing a plant, 1.6 million gallons per day. And then in 1968, we were able to negotiate a contract to allow service from Hudsonville and the eastern portion of Georgetown Township. In 1971, in 1988, the plant was expanded to eventually 4.4 MGD. And then in 1989, we had the First Amendment, and that was when the remainder of Georgetown Township was added, and Jamestown Township had nine sections added. And shortly thereafter, Jamestown Township constructed their sewer system in Jamestown. The relationship started to waver a bit. We wanted to get additional capacity, we couldn't come to terms with the City of Granville, and as a result, they went and they negotiated an agreement with the City of Wyoming for three MGD of additional capacity. We ended up paying the bulk of that cost, and the cost per gallon of treat was much higher at the City of Wyoming. And so that was a cause of stress between the parties. As a result, to try to get out of that stress, we attempted to form an authority, the residents of Granville voted against that, and so again, again, we were at an impasse. But nonetheless, we were able to have a Second Amendment, we added four sections of London Township, one section of Jamestown, and then this $1,000 trunkage fee was one concept to get through our impasse. And then by 2008, we were finally able to come up with an agreement, and the Third Amendment was passed, we had one more section in London. And here's the main thing, we agreed to expand the plant, they allowed Ottawa County to provide financing for the Ottawa County communities, so that the City of Hudsonville, Granville, would not have to pull that full weight. It created an advisory committee, and that was real important to some of the impasse that we were having. We weren't talking to each other long. And so as a result, we did expand the plant, it's at 10 MGD right now, and we have ample capacity for the foreseeable future, and I'll get into the details of that in a bit. And then, when I took over in this position as Director in 2014, I had some issues with the rate methodology. It was a longstanding issue that we had, and so I brought up that with the staff at Granville, and they agreed to enter into a rate step. And so by 2016, they agreed to a new, much bigger rate methodology, and that's what we've been working under ever since 2016. We haven't put that into writing, and that's one of the things that we're being addressed here hopefully tonight. And then in 2010, we had the solids project, some of you may have remembered, that came to you to do the, request the financing. So let's talk a little bit about what we're changing in this agreement. So, well, number, well, first of all, number one, we're taking those three amendments in the original agreement, plus the 1985 industrial pre-treatment agreement, and we're putting them all together and restating them. In addition, we're adding some new things. We're going to add four sections in Jamestown Township. Jamestown, as you know, is continuing to grow, and this expansion is a natural expansion of where they see their sewer system growing in the next few years. It provides more assurances to Ottawa County that we can expand it if and when we ever need to in the future. And then it also memorializes that rate methodology that we've been working under since 2016. This is a map of the new service area. It does not include all of Jamestown Township, so if and when we need to expand, we'd have to approach that with Granville. These two charts show a little bit about how we're using the capacity right now. The monthly use of the capacity, we're at about 39%. Granville uses about 20%. That leaves almost 41% that's unused, so there's quite a bit of capacity that's still available for use. But if you just look at a monthly flow total, we're, Ottawa County as a whole is using about 68% of capacity. So this next slide is a real quick summary of where we're at with capacity. 10 MGD, as I mentioned, is broken into two sections, 4.4 is the capacity prior to expansion, 5.6 is our capacity outright. Of that 4.4 that was originally expanded, there's about one MGD that's first come, first served, and then the remainder, about 3.4 MGD, is reserved for the City of Granville. And so between now and 2030, if we needed additional capacity and the plant was not at capacity yet, we could negotiate terms with Granville to potentially buy that additional one MGD. The table to the right gives you a snapshot of where we're at. So in 2010, when we expanded the plant, we do a 20-year projection, and that's how we came up with 10 MGD, it was 9.97, we rounded up. And that is how we split the pie, if you will. The middle column is where we're at right now, we're only at about 5.5 MGD of capacity. And I've also projected new flows, and based on those projections, by 2040, I don't foresee us using any more than 8.15 MGD. So that means for foreseeable, at least in this planning period, we have ample capacity. Now, if we had a large industrial user, you know, that could be more quickly. But for general planning purposes, we're in a very good position. The last and final thing is this chart, and it shows the plant capacity at 10 MGD, and for planning purposes, we were, there's a milestone at 80%. When we hit that milestone, Eagle would require us to start the planning for the next expansion. And so this chart shows the total flow, the green line, and then the subsets of each constituent unit. And that shows that, you know, we're not looking to hit that 80% mark until 2040, and then it won't be well beyond that before we get the capacity to continue at the current rate. So this contract has been presented to Granville, and they tabled it, pending the review from the local units. I started staff to staff, we worked several years to try to get this. COVID hit, so we had some on and off, but staff is very comfortable with this, Granville has reviewed it, our Ottawa County communities have reviewed it, and they provided comments, and we presented those comments to Granville's attorney, and we're like 99% there. I have not received final checkoff on the language that I'm presenting here today, and so I would ask that your approval would be pending final approval by Granville and working out minor wording changes that would be acceptable to the mayor and the attorney for the city. So that was the same approval that we did with Jamestown Township, they've already approved it. I've got a meeting scheduled with Georgetown next Monday, and then two more Mondays. I've presented it to my board, and pending everybody else's approval, they'll move forward with it. So I'm here today asking for your approval. I understand that there's a little uncertainty over the final language, but I can assure you that that's going to be a sausage making up a phrase here or something very minor. So I'm confident that we're to the point where we can go forward and move ahead with this, and I'm here today to answer any questions that you may have on this agreement, but I'm very confident that this provides the tools for my successor and your successor to serve us very well in the future.
Any questions from the commission? I have a couple. I always do.
Excellent.
So we represent about 12% right now, but in the future, we'll be down about 8%, it looks like, just doing some rough calculation. But it's good we have that excess capacity, and we're well positioned for the development in the future. How much of that is the septic systems being taken offline and being required to be part of the system?
I'm not familiar with the policies in Hudsonville, but I know Georgetown has been pretty aggressive with some policies requiring people to hook up when a road gets rebuilt. They have a certain period of time, and then there's some financial incentives regarding the hookup fees. So I think that has really been.
That's brought a lot of, yeah, that capacity's going to get used up with the septic system being taken offline.
So Georgetown, unlike Hudsonville, which was, which was more fully sewered, has had some gaps in some of their sewer systems, so they've been working on trying to address that. So I hope that addressed your question.
Yeah, we have one large commercial activity in the city, West Michigan Beef, that's expanding, I think threefold? Tobin, you around that? I think it's nearly threefold. Is that, is that calculated in your?
Yes, so the way that we handle industrial users, we have excess treatment capacity that's available, and so we make that available to those users, but there's a surcharge that we'll charge. So there's, there's a cost to treating that waste, and so as long as the capacity's available, we make that treatment available for those customers. Over time, as the plant expands and as those businesses may change, there may be a point in time in the far distant future where we may have to look at some of those industrial contributions and require the business to do more pre-treatment.
Right.
Right now, we're not there, we've got, we've got ample capacity, and we don't have any, I don't foresee that as a problem in the future.
So you're aware of the expansion of West Michigan Beef and what they're going to do to the system here come October?
And there's ample capacity for us to be able to handle that. In the future, we may, I believe we need to start to develop some policies so that we have them in place to deal with how we handle that excess capacity. We've got some great examples from the Holland area, they have a large industrial base, and they've been dealing with this for quite some time. And so I have been working with Granville on some of that, but we decided that we would set that aside, get this over the finish line, and then go back and try to develop some of those policies to set us up, set us up for that next step.
Okay. You just might want to keep us in the information loop if you, if there's some problems there or some challenges, I think we need to be aware of that.
Most definitely. And the good thing about how we've got this set up, we meet quarterly, and so we talk about, that's a standing item on our quarterly meetings, is the industrial pre-treatment program, and so we talk about that four times a year.
Because it is kind of a unique operation with, in terms of their sewage discharge.
Right.
Finally, Tyler, did our attorney get a chance to review this?
Yes, sir. Ron Bolchi and another member of Dickinson Wright.
Jessica.
It was Jessica, sorry. Jessica looked at this, there was a couple versions we looked at. We did offer some language changes, relatively minor, some of them were accepted, some of them were rebuked. Talking to Pat prior to the meeting, on the ones that weren't accepted, we, we are, we're okay with that. And it really comes down to the management and the ownership of the facility. It is Granville's facility. As such, Ron was comfortable with the language, and I think one thing that's a really big deal that we need to focus, is Granville's been a good partner through this, past leadership has been good. Bob and I do attend the meetings quarterly, and so because we have a positive relationship, you know, this restated agreement really is in the best interest of the city, in my opinion, and, you know, I really appreciate past leadership here in looking future, which I would argue is more important than the now.
Any interest by the Commissioners to get a tour someday? I'm not hearing a lot of hands going up here. I would be fascinated.
Maybe on a cooler winter day.
They're finishing up that solids handling project, so there is some new equipment.
And your gas, you're capturing all the methane now and recycling that, that was a big expense we had two years ago.
Yeah, there's a second co-gen unit, and we're going to be to the point where we'll be able to create almost enough energy to run the plant by itself, just on that gas.
So we're getting a return on that investment we made, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Good. Any questions or discussion from the Commissioners? You're looking at me, Phil, I know you want to ask something.
I just, I, I have concerns that this is still this moving target. I, I know you said it's minor, but it's still gray, and that concerns me.
Well, I'll make the same, if I could, I'm sorry, I apologize. If I could, I'll make the same offer I did to Jamestown, I'll come back to the council and I'll represent it, if it's anything that Tyler or the mayor thinks is significant that warrants it.
I mean, is there anything that we have to act on it tonight, or can we act next month if it's nailed down by then?
Only that I've got to line things up for.
And I understand Granville wants to go last, because it's their plant, it's their home field.
Can I offer a recommendation? The city commission could pass. Can I offer a recommendation? The city commission could pass it as written, contingent on future changes by the city manager. It'll give you an opportunity to look at the language. If it is minor language, commas here, commas there, we can do that. If not, I can bring this to the group, and we can bring that. Doing that perhaps can give Granville good faith, but still offer an opportunity in our end.
That's what I was thinking. Am I allowed to make and change to my own motion?
Yes.
Okay, then I would offer an amended motion to say, to authorize the signing of the agreement by the mayor and the city's clerk, subject to review and approval by the city manager of Hudsonville.
Who's second?
Second.
Amended motion. Any questions by the commission? Hearing none, roll call.
We have to approve the amended motion first and then the motion. But I also, is that okay, Pat?
I appreciate your flexibility. I'm confident that there won't be any changes, but just 99%. So there's that little bit. I'm dealing with attorneys that like, they get paid by the word, so.
So how do we do this? We approve the...
Yeah, amendment.
Approve the amendment? I'm looking at you, Jill.
I still have vacation brains, so...
I think it's a voice vote to approve the amended motion, and then it's a roll call to approve, if that's approved.
Yes.
All those in favor by voice count of approving the amendment say aye. All those opposed say no. Amended motion is approved. Roll call, please, on the amended motion.
All right. Commissioner Laurer?
Yes.
Groot, sorry. Commissioner Branson?
Yes.
Bullheiss?
Yes.
DeVray?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Aye, motion carries. Thanks, Pat. Have a great evening and keep up the good work.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Moving on to item number 17, DSMI bid award. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to award Water Distribution System Materials Inventory Contract in the amount of $56,980 to Plumbers Environmental.
It's been moved and supported. There's a memo in the packet. Bob, do you want to discuss this at all? Anything of significance that you want to impress upon us? I like the shirt. I'm not so sure, but...
Thank you. I appreciate that. Yeah, get refocused.
I like your shirt, Bob. I like your shirt.
You look fine, Bob.
The, this is a small part of requirements we have to meet for the state of Michigan for the revised lead copper requirements with the VDA and state of Michigan, you know, a few years back now. But a part of the requirements are a verified water distribution system materials inventory by which we have to physically identify and confirm material that our water services are constructed from and a representative sample throughout the city. I think that number is 192 sites. We need to actually put our eyes and put our no lead wipe test kits on and identify that those water services are in fact copper or galvanized in 99.9% of cases. This part, this is back for truck work. We have to actually physically excavate the water service line on each side of the stop box. So we are going to be digging holes in people's park yards in most places. It should go quick. This is something that these guys have been doing for a few years now as part of the same requirements. So we're really happy with the bid. Numbers have come down a lot in the last three years since they first started doing this because they've figured out how easy it is. I think we actually originally had budgeted about twice the amount, which I think you can see how we did have one bid come back about twice the amount. And this is all paid through a 100% grant that we received in 2021 from the state of Michigan. Grant total is like $350,000.
That was all for us?
Yes. 100%. No match, in kind labor. But the remainder of that balance will be spent on asset management plan development, you know, water system asset management plan development. So we hope to have that all done and complete in the next one year.
Was that a grant that you'd worked on?
Yes. Yeah, I worked on the application of leasing abandoned drink. It was, our timing was right. We got in there early. It was a good one. It was kind of one of those, just a random mandate, which I think it was recognized a lot. Communities didn't have the money sitting around to do the work that they were requiring of them. So we hit it up at the right time.
I just don't recall that. Do you? Have we got that grant?
Not for that amount of money.
It's been a long time.
I hope you were properly acknowledged for your work on that in 2021. Thank you again.
Any other questions for Bob? Good work, Bob.
Bob, you have good, or any history here at Hudsonville with plumbers doing similar things?
I'm sorry, experience?
Do you have any experience with plumbers doing this kind of work? Either here or your previous place?
Yeah, we work with plumber, I'm sorry, I thought you were referring to plumbers as in the trade.
Oh, no, no. The company, plumbers without the B.
Yeah, we have a really good history in Hudsonville with plumbers and environmental. They've been doing a lot of our storm system repairs for us that were identified in our last asset management plan. And they are the group that has done all the camera work in the city. So we have a good relationship with those guys. They seem to know the city really well, and they can be efficient to get the work, you know, and ask for the least of us compared to the other things.
I drove through Alleghen yesterday in downtown Alleghen. It looked like they were doing the same thing, backed their truck out there right between the sidewalk and the curb. Similar things. Thanks for your work on this.
Do you think you're going to get any blowback from the residents when we start digging holes?
I hope not. As much as you can say, it's going to be as minimally invasive as possible. You know, we have to identify, we have to select 192 locations, but the state is allowing us to switch locations if there's, you know, a great amount of, you know, anything that would give you stress about making the excavation. So we're going to be looking to excavate basically in the curb lawns and maybe just into the front yard, but part of the same bid package is the restoration. So as soon as they, they're talking about popping, you know, a roughly 10- or 12-inch hole right down to the service line, we can make the ID through a hole that big, and they'll have it backfilled hopefully and reseeded before anyone gets home.
How do we advise the residents?
We're going to identify everyone with a letter, phone call if we have contact info. We haven't gotten there yet because we've got to randomize. We have a list of 1,000-ish homes that all qualify to be in the random sampling pool. And we haven't randomized out those 192 yet, so we don't know where our target properties are yet. But they're going to get a letter right away, and we'll start reaching out face-to-face with folks.
When will we be done? When will we start? When will we be phased?
We're hoping to have all of this work done this fall.
Wow.
And they said it's honestly a couple of weeks worth of work, you know, to get in there.
So now, will there always be somebody from the DPW on site when they're doing the work, or?
Yeah, because there's another element of that. Like, we have, assuming that we find no lead services in the city, which to my knowledge today, there are no lead services in the city of Hudsonville. But so assuming that we run into only copper and galvanized, there has to be two physical locations outside the home, one on either side of the stop box. And we have to make a physical ID inside the home as the service material comes through the wall. So a big part of all that will be, will be personally involved with the whole thing.
You're going to be busy.
Yeah. It's going to be a good push, but it's, it's going to feel good to get through it. I say we got, we got good financing for the project. I'm looking forward to working with plumbers. And I think the end result is going to be a good product for us. I mean, we're going to get another great planning document, kind of a thing. We're going to have a really solid, really up-to-date, technologically current asset management plan for the water system.
Good work. Any other questions or discussion? There's a motion that's been approved on the floor. Hearing no other discussion, I'll call for the roll.
Commissioner DeVray?
Yes.
Laurer?
Yes.
Bullheiss?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Groot?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Aye, thank you, Bob. Well done. Moving on to item 18, recommendation to purchase a new fire department command vehicle. Is there a motion?
Motion to authorize the Department of Public Works to spend up to $70,000 on a new 2023 or 2024 Chevy Silverado 2500 HD 4x4 extended cab or comparable to serve as the fire department's command vehicle.
Second motion. It's been moved and supported. I know, Mark, you're just chomping at the bit to come up here and talk to us about all the, how beautiful this truck's going to be.
We've made some progress on trucks lately in my deals program that we've used for years. Just recently, within the last week, I found I got pricing from them. I took GM Chevy for a long time, you'll be able to get us that pricing. I want to deal with that pricing. So I do have numbers kind of where we're going to be. So it's going to be a little bit easier now going forward. We'd be able to use my deals pricing. We had heard rumor that my deals pricing was going away from certain distributors for Dodge and possibly Chevy, but Chevy stuck with it. So we do have my deals pricing. So that way, we don't have to go out and bid three, four different dealerships and whatnot on that aspect. I've been working right along with the fire chief on this, had several meetings and discussions with him on what we do, what we purchase, and how the whole process works going forward. So truck-wise, it's just kind of a double cab pickup, a little bit more room for him and his material and stuff in there. He helped me spec it and do all the work on that.
All the outfit, that includes everything?
Yeah, we're working with that budget number a little bit, but we should be pretty close.
Is Sound Off Signal going to provide your...
Yes, I've got a quote through Sound Off Signal. We're still getting our support from them.
Well, I have some input there. If you need some help, I can call them. Just say no, I have several friends there.
We got a good relationship with them.
And chief, you got to be happy?
It's going to be nice.
It won't go in the ditch?
It'll be four-wheel drive, right?
If it goes in the ditch, it'll come out of the ditch.
Any other discussion? Questions from the commission? Hearing none, there's a motion on the floor. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Laurer?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Bullheiss?
Yes.
DeVray?
Yes.
Groot?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Aye. Moving on to item number 19, recommendation to purchase the new DPW pickup truck. Is there a motion?
Motion to authorize the Department of Public Works to spend up to $62,000 on a new 2023 or 2024 Chevy Silverado 2500 HD 4x4 WT or comparable with plow to replace DPW truck number 211.
Second motion. It's been moved and supported. Any questions for Mark or Bob? What do we do with the old one?
So what we've been doing lately with our old trucks, one of the ones we still have right now, I believe it's a 2009, I'll be getting rid of that one. And then this truck will take its place. We run trucks for 12 years.
12 years, wow.
So we'll be getting rid of the 09, and then this truck will become one of our part-time vehicles for our part-time employees. We've done the same thing here at City Hall. We rotated some DPW trucks over here throughout the years. So it helps them here, also part-time employees.
Good. Any discussion, questions? Bob, you good?
He nailed it.
He nailed it. There's a motion on the floor. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Laurer?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Bullheiss?
Yes.
DeVray?
Yes.
Groot?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Aye. Moving on to item number 19, recommendation to purchase the new DPW pickup truck. Is there a motion?
Motion to authorize the Department of Public Works to spend up to $62,000 on a new 2023 or 2024 Chevy Silverado 2500 HD 4x4 WT or comparable with plow to replace DPW truck number 211.
Second motion. It's been moved and supported. Any questions for Mark or Bob? What do we do with the old one?
So what we've been doing lately with our old trucks, one of the ones we still have right now, I believe it's a 2009, I'll be getting rid of that one. And then this truck will take its place. We run trucks for 12 years.
12 years, wow.
So we'll be getting rid of the 09, and then this truck will become one of our part-time vehicles for our part-time employees. We've done the same thing here at City Hall. We rotated some DPW trucks over here throughout the years. So it helps them here, also part-time employees.
Good. Any discussion, questions? Bob, you good?
He nailed it.
He nailed it. There's a motion on the floor. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Laurer?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Bullheiss?
Yes.
DeVray?
Yes.
Groot?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Aye. Moving on to item number 19, recommendation to purchase the new DPW pickup truck. Is there a motion?
Motion to authorize the Department of Public Works to spend up to $62,000 on a new 2023 or 2024 Chevy Silverado 2500 HD 4x4 WT or comparable with plow to replace DPW truck number 211.
Second motion. It's been moved and supported. Any questions for Mark or Bob? What do we do with the old one?
So what we've been doing lately with our old trucks, one of the ones we still have right now, I believe it's a 2009, I'll be getting rid of that one. And then this truck will take its place. We run trucks for 12 years.
12 years, wow.
So we'll be getting rid of the 09, and then this truck will become one of our part-time vehicles for our part-time employees. We've done the same thing here at City Hall. We rotated some DPW trucks over here throughout the years. So it helps them here, also part-time employees.
Good. Any discussion, questions? Bob, you good?
He nailed it.
He nailed it. There's a motion on the floor. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Laurer?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Bullheiss?
Yes.
DeVray?
Yes.
Groot?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Aye. Moving on to item number 19, recommendation to purchase the new DPW pickup truck. Is there a motion?
Motion to authorize the Department of Public Works to spend up to $62,000 on a new 2023 or 2024 Chevy Silverado 2500 HD 4x4 WT or comparable with plow to replace DPW truck number 211.
Second motion. It's been moved and supported. Any questions for Mark or Bob? What do we do with the old one?
So what we've been doing lately with our old trucks, one of the ones we still have right now, I believe it's a 2009, I'll be getting rid of that one. And then this truck will take its place. We run trucks for 12 years.
12 years, wow.
So we'll be getting rid of the 09, and then this truck will become one of our part-time vehicles for our part-time employees. We've done the same thing here at City Hall. We rotated some DPW trucks over here throughout the years. So it helps them here, also part-time employees.
Good. Any discussion, questions? Bob, you good?
He nailed it.
He nailed it. There's a motion on the floor. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Laurer?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Bullheiss?
Yes.
DeVray?
Yes.
Groot?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Aye. Moving on to item number 19, recommendation to purchase the new DPW pickup truck. Is there a motion?
Motion to authorize the Department of Public Works to spend up to $62,000 on a new 2023 or 2024 Chevy Silverado 2500 HD 4x4 WT or comparable with plow to replace DPW truck number 211.
Second motion. It's been moved and supported. Any questions for Mark or Bob? What do we do with the old one?
So what we've been doing lately with our old trucks, one of the ones we still have right now, I believe it's a 2009, I'll be getting rid of that one. And then this truck will take its place. We run trucks for 12 years.
12 years, wow.
So we'll be getting rid of the 09, and then this truck will become one of our part-time vehicles for our part-time employees. We've done the same thing here at City Hall. We rotated some DPW trucks over here throughout the years. So it helps them here, also part-time employees.
Good. Any discussion, questions? Bob, you good?
He nailed it.
He nailed it. There's a motion on the floor. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Laurer?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Bullheiss?
Yes.
DeVray?
Yes.
Groot?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Aye. Moving on to item number 19, recommendation to purchase the new DPW pickup truck. Is there a motion?
Motion to authorize the Department of Public Works to spend up to $62,000 on a new 2023 or 2024 Chevy Silverado 2500 HD 4x4 WT or comparable with plow to replace DPW truck number 211.
Second motion. It's been moved and supported. Any questions for Mark or Bob? What do we do with the old one?
I feel bad for saying it, but we were diverted to Cancun, so I can add, I can add Mexico to my list of places I've seen.
Did you get the chance to enjoy Cancun?
No, I sat in the airplane for two hours.
Okay. Well, that was the most exciting thing about the trip?
Pretty much, yeah.
Tyler?
Just a few things. Bob and I met for a couple hours yesterday with Don DeVries from Fleece and Vanderbrink. Got some really great infrastructure updates. I will shoot an email out to the city commission with a brief summary on those rather than going through the list right now, but topics we discussed were the buttermilk creek park bathrooms, the final punch list of the 40th Avenue resurfacing project, which went from Van Buren to Grant, the Barry Allen street realignment, some great progress on there. And then I'm happy to announce that we did receive the, today, the necessary easements with regards to the New Holland and 32nd left turn lane. So we have those in hand as of this afternoon. And then also tomorrow, Bob and I, along with Don, will be meeting with the contractor with regards to the Baltimore and 32nd Ave repavement project. That may be tomorrow, we'll have some information coming out with regards to that, but I will shoot you a summary email. I encourage the commission to fire back with any questions. Secondly, the steering committee for the proposed community center and library as a part of, but still separate from the Village Green, will hold a public workshop on September 19th, which is a Tuesday, at 6:30 PM at Terrace Square. I encourage members of this body, our various boards, any and all stakeholders, members of the community, to come and offer your thoughts to the steering committee and the folks at Progressive AE who are working on this scoping for us. This is a very important element as we work towards the realization of the new community center and library. So again, that is September 19th at 6:30 at Terrace Square. And then finally, one of the cooler aspects of my job that I really enjoy is yesterday evening, I was able to attend the fire department training as well as the emergency operations team and their monthly meeting. At the fire department training, I was able to check out a new piece of equipment that we're considering, we're hopeful to buy, right, chief? It is a piece of equipment that I had the fortunate but very unfortunate experience to see in action by Wyoming's fire department. And something that we, the guys were trained on, excuse me, the team was trained on. Yesterday, there'll be additional trainings and something that I hope to be able to bring the city commission in the future. Chief and myself, more chief than me, are working on some external funding to try to secure this piece of equipment, but a cool piece of equipment nonetheless. And then finally, what I want to say is talking to chief and Dave Dahl with regards to the fair. Yesterday, I left very impressed and thankful that we had the leadership in place with regards to planning a safe fair, preparedness, looking at areas where if things go wrong, how they would respond, how we work with area departments and communities to ensure we're meeting the emergency services needed for that, and was very impressed. So kudos to you, Dave, chief, on that. The city of Hudsonville and the fair is in great hands, and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to attend and hear a little bit more about your plans and how to execute them if needed. So, thank you.
Thank you for the update, Tyler. The only thing I want to add tonight is that former city manager Patrick Waterman has started his position as deputy city manager for Wyoming. I did send him a note of congratulations, but I'm sure he'd appreciate hearing from all of us wishing him well in that new position. I think we all know he has some challenges at the county level, and we're all rooting for Patrick's continued success in city leadership. Is there anything else needs to come before the commission tonight?